Hi, everyone. Just give us a couple of minutes before we get started. Just want to make sure everyone can see me. So if you can just put in the chat box that you're able to see me, that would be great. Okay, great. Well, I'm glad that there are several people who have joined us today. So first, I just want to say hello. I'm Cook County Commissioner Donna Miller. And I'm here today to provide some information to you, as well as updates and resources that the county has available that we've actually rolled out. And we'll be joined at 3:30 by State Representative LaShawn Ford, who is going to provide some updates from the state. Although we are at home, we are hard at work coordinating efforts throughout the suburban Cook County. And I will just want to tell you that lots of things are happening, things are being done. I know this is a difficult time for many people. Many people have not been to work, many people are without resources. And I can certainly relate to first responders and frontline healthcare workers. As many of you know, my husband is a dentist, and he has been providing crucial dental services to patients who are in need, as well as his staff and the staff that's hard at work in the dental clinic. So we go through some of those same concerns and issues about exposure, social distancing, and making sure that everyone is safe. We feel that in our home, just like many of you do in your own homes. So I'm also the mother of two teenage boys. So we are home doing homeschooling, doing work, and getting everyone acclimated to a home learning environment, which is sometimes not that easy. I want to cover a few key areas with you today from the county. The first, that I really wanted to make sure that everyone is signed up for the county's alert system. This is where you can get the latest information from the county. And it's just a text alert system that you can add to your cell phone. And it's very simple, and we will be putting out information on the chat box where you can, where we can find some of these resources as you need them and as we discuss them on the call today. So the county alert system is just simply text the words "ALERT COOK" to 888-777. So please do that if you have not done that yet. This is where you'll be able to get information and updates directly from the county on a continuous basis. So that's number one. Number two, for those of you who may not be signed up for our newsletter, please sign up for our newsletter. We provide updates on a continuous basis from the county and other resources that we have access to. And you can sign up for our newsletter, which we will also put into the chat box at www.godonago.com. So please sign up for the newsletter, because we have an abundance of information, which I'm sure you can imagine, that some may apply to some people and some may apply to others. And want to make sure that all the bases are covered and we're getting as much information out to people as possible. There are many additional resources on the county's website. And I wanted to cover some of the information that has been put out from the Bureau of Economic Development on resources that address the county's, Cook County's economic relief package. So if you are a small business or know someone who isn't a small business, there is a comprehensive economic relief package for small businesses, nonprofits, community service organizations, independent contractors. And all of this information is compiled for you on our county website. So I would encourage you to go and check that information out. There is about $35 million that the county has allocated to provide some kind of access and help towards small businesses. Under this relief package, some of the things that have been changed or have been extended are the due dates on home rule taxes, like the alcohol beverage tax, amusement tax, tobacco tax, and gasoline and hotel accommodations. So all of those will be pushed back. You can view that information, as I said, on the county's website. There's also small business loans that are available through the United States Business Administration. And we also have on that website guidance and hotlines on how to prepare your workplace for COVID-19, supply chain distribution planning checklist, and an Illinois manufacturing helpline. So I'd encourage any small businesses that need help to go and utilize those resources. Right now, I'm just going to provide some really high-level information, because I do want to get to your questions and see who has questions and concerns. But I wanted to touch on these important topics first. The other important topic is the census. There have been some adjusted, adjustments to the census date that will be collected and the due dates that have been extended through the census. So I know there's many of our municipalities that have participated in the census by forming complete count commissions. And if you are tied into any of those, I would encourage you to ask questions of those, those complete count commissions, as well as their census information on the state level and the federal level. But I did just want to alert everyone, the census is still happening. The dates have just been extended, and we will provide that resource as to where the extension dates are and the flyer that shows what all those dates are. I wanted to make sure that we all participate in the census. I can't encourage that enough. This is not the time for people to say that it's not important or it doesn't matter. It's crucial, and it matters even more now. And we can see that directly by what we're experiencing now as a response to a pandemic, that resources have to flow in and out of certain areas. And we need those resources now more than ever. So those were the main areas I wanted to give as far as covering some high-level points. And I wanted to see what questions we have in the chat box. And I will start to answer some of those questions. Some of the questions may not be able to be answered right now, and we will get that information if that's the case. But once again, I appreciate you being on. And I see one of the first questions says, I think someone's saying, "Where are we from?" Well, we are, I represent Cook County, and that's outside of Chicago. And the area I represent is 36 different municipalities in the south suburbs of Cook County. And just to give you a brief overview of what county government looks like, there are 17 commissioners in Cook County. Each one of us represents an area of 325,000 people throughout Cook County, and it's divided between the city of Chicago and suburban Cook. The 36 different municipalities that I represent are located in the south and southwest suburbs. And I can tell you that we've been in constant contact with the mayors in the south suburbs and the southwest suburbs in this area, and making sure that we're coordinating whatever efforts that we can on that level. So I hope that answers that question. Another question was about stimulus checks. And Chantel Ferguson, thank you for that question about refusing to give checks to men with child support careers. That would be a federal-level question or a state-level maybe. And when Representative LaShawn Ford comes on, maybe he can answer that directly for us. So let's just put that one on the back burner. Don asked a question, "Why are there no testing stations in the south suburbs?" That's a great question, and that's something that we are discussing on every level of government. I can assure you that from the state representative level, from the county level, as well as the federal level, that we are all trying to work towards having access to not only testing in a broad way, but very geographical testing that needs to be done in certain areas. And I am constantly focused on that. The answer that I've been given right now is that there are just not enough tests to go around. And once we do have access to more tests, we will be happy to provide that information. We did put out information from Cook County that addresses where testing sites are located throughout Cook County. We can post that in the chat box as well as to another link to where that information is. But at this point, those are where the testing locations are. And there's just such a shortage of testing, testing kits and testing availability that until that gets better coordination, we won't have a definite answer as to why that is. Someone else asked a question about why and how testing in black and brown different areas has not been addressed. And again, like I said, there's a shortage in tax, in testing availability. And believe me, those of us who are focused on representing communities of color are definitely asking those questions. I'm just trying to scroll and look at some of the questions that are on here. So if you do have a question, please let me know. Right, Frank put on here that the testing sites are closer, we wish there was one closer to Tinley Park. I agree. And the closest one is in Joliet. That's exactly right. And that's where we are right now. As soon as that information changes and more testing becomes available and there are additional testing sites, we will provide that information to you. If you have any other questions, please feel free to put your questions in. The other thing I just wanted to make mention of, if you did not hear earlier about signing up for the text alert system, is to please do that. Some of you may not be aware that Cook County has its own emergency management department that has been coordinating different essential elements of the COVID-19 pandemic throughout all of Cook County. So just wanted to make sure that you were aware of that. And I'm just going to give you a little bit of update as to what, what type of things they're doing. They are coordinating efforts with the different levels, with the different municipalities throughout all of Cook County. And they do have conference calls and have been in contact with all of the municipalities, from the mayors, the managers, presidents of those communities, as well as the police chiefs, fire chiefs. So there's a coordinated effort as to what that actually looks like from our emergency management department. I see someone else had a question here. So okay, yes, Oliver, we will get back in touch with you. So thank you for that information. We do get information from other areas or entities that are not directly related to Cook County. Those are other things that we actually share out on our, in our newsletter. So that's why we do encourage people to sign up for the newsletter. And that will just give you whatever information we can provide that we're able to share, as well as other information that comes our way. So as you can imagine, we do get quite a bit of information. Right, someone put a question, Chantel, thank you, about more healthcare workers do want to volunteer, which is fantastic. And as you've been paying attention to the news that many people did go to New York to help there. But right, there's a lack of PPE, not just here in Illinois, not just in Cook County, throughout the entire country. So they have to ensure the staff is protected the best way possible. And as I mentioned, I mean, even my husband, who is a dentist, has to make sure that he and his staff are using universal precautions, as well as making sure they're safe in, in the area, in their clinics to protect not only the patients, but themselves and their families as well. I see a question here from Madeline. Hi, Madeline, there's a struggle with getting through the unemployment. Are we going to bring more staffing? Yes, so that's another issue that has definitely been unprecedented amount of people applying for and needing, actually needing, the resources of the unemployment offices. And I think that if we, if you don't mind, Madeline, when State Representative LaShawn Ford comes on, maybe we can ask him a little bit about the state's efforts on unemployment resources that might be available. I did want to make mention of another hospital that is doing testing. It's not in the south suburbs, but it's in the south portion of Chicago, and at Roseland Hospital. Roseland Hospital has combined their testing site and offered their testing for our first responders throughout Cook, through Cook County, through the sheriff's office, as well as other first responders through the hospital are being tested at Roseland. And not to get very too technical, but Roseland does have a test that allows you to test through blood tests, as well as through the swabs that many of you have probably seen on the news or what have you. So we do thank Roseland Hospital for all that they've done as far as making sure that they are not only providing testing directly at the hospital, but they are also have a mobile unit that is accessible. And right now, that is really being focused on the first responders, which we certainly appreciate. Hi, Jake, I see that you put, "Do you think this will go till June instead of May?" I really can't speculate on that. I want to make sure that we are using all the best information from the clinical experts that are out there. And if that is the case, I am assured, or I feel comfortable and confident knowing that we will do whatever is necessary to make sure that our Cook County is protected, as well as our hospitals. And this has just been a ramp-up period as to making sure that the services are there, A, but then also the protection, like someone mentioned earlier about the PPEs, that those are also available for our first responders. And hopefully, really hopefully, we can make sure that those supplies are there. And I don't know if some of you have paid attention to Governor Pritzker's press conferences and the information that he's put out, but I do feel that he has been diligently working to make sure that Illinois has what we need, and it's just timing. This has not been unique to any of the states, and we are still in the same boat as many areas as far as getting information. Well, hi, Dr. Washington, how are you? Okay, so you said about the termination of Dr. Mason exactly, yeah, during this unprecedented time. Thanks for that question. And all I can say at this point that that was a personnel decision. And they do have two other people in place right now through the Cook County Department of Public Health to address needs that are still obviously ongoing. And if you have any specific questions for Cook County Department of Health, I can definitely make sure I'm disseminating that information to those who need it, as well as making sure that we are getting access to what's needed in the areas that I represent outside of the city of Chicago, so that making sure suburban Cook is represented as well. Hi, Joshua, I see your question here. Yeah, about nonviolent offenders and inmate rights. Actually, I'm not trying to pass the buck here, but that is something that State Representative LaShawn Ford is going to discuss in his segment. So I will say that the sheriff's office, the sheriff's department, excuse me, has been very diligent and on top of implementing plans on what to do from their perspective. And we'll talk a little bit more, more about that in just a little bit. Yeah, we wanted, we definitely do want to make sure we're providing support and appropriate rehabilitation support for those who are released. And as you can imagine, there's a strain on resources across the board right now. And what's, what's going to happen as far as those resources get strained? I think right now, the focus is to make sure that not only inmates, but their families as well are not be, have not been exposed to COVID-19. And if so, how are we going to take care of them? Just bear with me one second. I see State Representative LaShawn Ford has joined us, and I'm going to add him in here.
Hi. Hi, Commissioner.
Hi, how? Thanks for joining us.
Thank you for having me.
I just want to check in with our audience to make sure they can see both of us. Can someone just let me know that you can see both of us right now? We are technology innovators right now, right? So let me see.
I think they can see us both.
They can? Yes, okay, great. Yeah, so thank you, Representative Ford, for joining us. Actually, the last question that was just asked was about inmate rights. But if you wanted to just go and introduce yourself for those who may not know you, and then you can get into talking a little bit about what's going on on the state level and also what's really important that you wanted to discuss about the prison population and the jail.
Yeah, thank you so much, Commissioner. I'm Mr. LaShawn Ford, and I have the eighth district, and that covers the West Side Austin community. It covers Oak Park, Burwyn, LaGrange, LaGrange Park, North Riverside, and parts of Proviso. And yeah, I wanted to share some information. If you don't mind telling your viewers about the numbers as of today. The Director of Public Health just shared the numbers. Did you share those already, Commissioner?
No, no, I did not, yep.
They just gave the numbers, the most up-to-date numbers. The governor always does his 2:30 briefing. And in Illinois, there are 11,256 cases of positive coronavirus patients and 274 deaths. Of that, we've had 58,983 tested. That's a small number, Commissioner. What do you think out of 13 million people?
Yeah, and we were talking a little bit before, Representative, about the, you know, the lack of testing sites that are in the south suburban communities, that we don't have those. And yeah, that number is small. And what I was saying, and maybe you can shed some light on that too, is that, you know, the lack of testing ability is just not there yet. And we need to get that ramped up. So there is a website that the county puts out for all of the testing sites in Cook County. And that's what someone was asking, "Why are there no testing sites in the south suburbs?", which is a great question and something that we hope to say on top of, and get better answers to.
Yeah, and so the numbers in Chicago alone are 4,600, so 4,314 cases in Chicago with 90 deaths. So that's a lot in Chicago. Cook County alone has 3,420 with 96 deaths. And so we have that as a concern in, in the state. And the numbers by race, whites are 3,141. Blacks are leading in the numbers. We talked about that, Commissioner, how we have to do something about the fact that blacks are disproportionately leading this, the positive cases. So blacks are 3312. The Hispanic population is 1060. The Asian population has 382. There are 2,750 who have not identified who they were. They left their race, ethnicity blank. So 30% of the people in this state right now are testing positive. Those are the numbers. And in Cook County, I'm sorry, in the Department of Corrections, there are, how many people? 60 people that have tested positive in the Stateville Prison alone. That's just one prison. 60 people have tested positive. One person died today from Stateville Prison in the community hospital. That was reported by Dr. Ezek today. So that person passed. And I would like to ask, you asked for an update. I would like to give your viewers some information about childcare. There are 550 centers available for essential workers, 1,500 centers available, home centers for essential workers that provide night and weekend childcare. And looking for providers. So the state is looking for providers. And number to call for the application or to emergency childcare for essential workers is 888-228-1146.
What you said?
Okay, Siri, so that number again is 88-221146. That's for, to find emergency childcare for essential workers. And if you would like to be a childcare provider and become an essential childcare provider, you could call that number as well. The state is paying 30% above the normal rate for childcare for the centers. Because the numbers are down, they're not healthcare centers, uh, operating full capacity. So the numbers are lower, so they're paying the childcare providers at a higher rate, 30% higher than usual. And there was a, still I wanted to, um, also report, because I wanted to find out how the county did it. Most recently, there are Cook County Jail releasing people through some type of, um, system. And, um, it was some type of bail system that was put together in Cook County. And I think that you has some.
Uh, well, thank, yeah.
There was a, a non-for-profit program, right?
Right, yeah, so that just happened as of today. And this was under the leadership of Commissioner Larry Sufferden and he introduced this ordinance. Um, this was, uh, a few months ago, well, maybe last year. So last year, uh, we passed a charitable bail ordinance where it would allow, um, bail to be provided by some non-for-profits. And so the story that was out today was saying that there was an organization that pooled their resources, um, to provide bail for several dozen people. And this was, you know, for detainees at the jail. So this not only helps, um, the detainees, obviously, because they couldn't make bail. Now they are able to, uh, be released. But during this pandemic, we don't need people having the extra burden of potentially contracting, uh, COVID-19 while they'll, while they're under, um, being detained. So I'm, I'm glad that the Commissioners and, uh, Larry Sufferden was ahead of the curve. But because this is why we do things when there's not necessarily, um, an emergency situation happening. And I'm sure that right now, um, there is so much pressure on the jail system that it can really help people to have been released, um, under the, this non-for-profit right now.
And, and Commissioner, yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna say there are some help for businesses, small businesses. The state, um, has, um, support for the, um, food and, and beverage industry and for daycare centers and all, um, businesses in the state that's been suffering from the coronavirus. And I'll give you, your listeners and viewers, the number to DECO. That's 1-800-252-2923, that's DECO. And you can also email DECO at, um, D-E-C-O-C-E-O-Support@Illinois.gov. And I'll email you these, um, this information so that you will have it as well.
That's great.
And the.
And could you just tell them what DECO is?
That's the, um, that's the Department of Economic, um, and Opportunities Division where people are able to go and get support from their businesses. And so that's always a good one. And so money is being, um, passed through that agency from the SBA, um, to help support, um, of small businesses and medium-sized businesses in the state of Illinois. And they will help you work with the, um, local banks. And, um, if you call that number, 800-252-2923, you will be in, um, able to get some help. And Commissioner, I have to tell you that the people are struggling with the unemployment benefits because the unemployment benefits are growing in the state of Illinois. And the, um, department, they've worked out a, a system where they're putting people by alphabets, um, putting them in blocks by their last name so that the, um, system is not going to crash, uh, again. So hopefully next week, people will be in good position to apply for the unemployment.
Well, that was, that was a question earlier about the unemployment. And, um, do you know, so are there additional resources for people working in the unemployment office? Would you know about that? Or is that just the fix that they're gonna, you know, expand the, um, outreach via the computer?
No, oh, yeah, there we. And Governor is doing, for they, um, sure that we're able to get, um, more, um, people, uh, in position to apply. So that's, um, something that's, should be much better, um, this week where people should be able to apply. And it's important to note that ordinarily, there are, um, businesses and, and professions that wouldn't qualify for unemployment, like Rad Share, um, like barbers and beauticians, nail technicians. They will now be able to apply for unemployment in the state of Illinois, um, due to the, uh, COVID-19, um, virus and the support that it's getting from Washington DC.
Oh, that's good to know.
Position. And, and all our constituents that, um, receive SNAP benefits, the SNAP benefit, um, dollar amount has gone up, it's been increased. People that ordinarily would get, there were some seniors who'd get like $16. Now they're getting like, um, 130. It sounds an increase. So everyone will get an increase in their SNAP benefits as a result of COVID-19. Everyone that's eligible and that's receiving it.
Right. But do you have any information about the stimulus checks? I know that's a federal, um, program. But someone did have a question earlier about, um, stimulus checks not going to men, specifically with child support arrears. I don't know if you've heard anything about that or know any information on that subject.
Well, I have to tell you that they're absolutely right and, um, the state is mandated to withhold child support, um, stimulus checks from, um, parents, non-custodial parents that, um, that owe child support. So push for me and for others in the state to prevent the state from holding those stimulus checks. You know, we have to make sure that, you know, if one parent gets it, I mean, we, we need to make sure that whether you're the custodial parent, if you're not the custodial parent and there's a stimulus check for you, you could use that money to support your child. You know, there's no need to hold it back. So there are going to be some quote deadbeats that probably will not do the right thing. But there's no need in making everyone suffer for a few deadbeats because I think that the majority of families like to take care of their kids.
Exactly, yeah. Well, I'm just gonna answer a couple of other questions that are listed here and, um, that might be for both of us or give our opinions on. So hi Jeff, one of the questions was our thoughts on construction trades and if we believe they are essential workers here in the Chicago metropolitan area. And, um, that this has been in the media and, you know, whatnot. But yeah, what is Chicago's model, the city that works? So we do need our construction trades as well as all the trades, um, employed to keep, you know, things going. But I do understand in certain instances where it might, or may or may not be, uh, able to be, uh, an essential worker. So, um, I don't know, from the county level, I, we don't have specific jurisdiction over that. So I don't, I don't have, I'd love to hear your thoughts Jeff, more on what you think or what you've been hearing. And maybe Rep Ford, do you have some input?
Well, uh, construction workers are also a part of those that can apply for unemployment. Um, and I do understand that's not enough for families to take care of themselves. And, um, the executive order by the Governor still allows for certain construction work to continue. So it really depends on what type of work you're doing. And but role, work is, and vertical, we can go, um, in type of construction he's doing because, um, they are essential workers.
Yep, well, thank you. And we had another question. Hi Marcus and Jasmine, I'm glad you guys are here too. Um, so Marcus was asking, could we consider asking our federal, um, senators and congressional representatives to consider new legislation eliminating employers from legal liability through workman compensation? Um, for those who may contract COVID-19. So yeah, I can imagine this would be a huge financial burden, especially for small businesses in the sixth district specifically, but throughout all Cook County, throughout the whole state of Illinois. Um, so yeah, that would definitely be a great consideration. We will be, um, Marcus, I can get offline with you to talk to you about a, um, joint caucus call that's happening with different levels of, of government. So there'll be some of the, uh, congressmen on that call, so that would be worthwhile to bring up at that time. Did you have anything for that one, Representative Ford?
Yeah, um, I was reading Ferguson, Ferguson had a question. And the, yeah, so there is, I think that not only should we provide some support for the businesses for people that, um, that's the essential workers, but there should be some federal support for, um, some type of life insurance for individuals that may die as an essential worker. I mean, it's really critical that, um, families have some type of, um, life insurance policy that's paid for by the federal government in order to, um, bury their loved ones and provide some type of, um, for children that may be, um, lost as a result of, of being an essential worker. We saw a bus driver in Detroit, you know, and there are many essential workers that have contracted the virus. And I think that being frontline workers, there should be some type of federal, um, life insurance policy that's given to the families.
That's a great point.
Commissioner, you have, you have Ferguson, you could give her, uh, my email, I could say it now, repford@laShawnFord.com and I can help her with that child support, it's a state issue.
Great, thank you. Um, I have, I, I hope she got that down, but if she didn't, let us know and we can type it in for you. Um, so I guess just the other thing that I wanted to say is that how, uh, all the levels of government, and I'm talking from the municipal level, the state level, the county level, the federal level, we are all trying to coordinate as much information as possible. And so that's why Rep Ford was kind enough to join me today, um, so that he could talk from the state perspective and in a different geographic area because many of the issues are the same. So, um, we appreciate you so much for being here today. And I don't know, I, I think we got to all the questions that are here today. Um, let me just make sure. I just want to make sure we're getting everybody's question because I went kinda out of order. But I appreciate everybody who joined us today and we're gonna do this again. Um, and we're gonna do this again because there's constant updates on information, right? And, oh, oh, I see this question Joshua had, uh. Yeah, the social determinants of health are definitely real. And we did see disproportionate disparities, uh, in an article that I saw just today that in the city of Chicago. So remember that Representative Ford and I also have areas that are suburban areas. Uh, but in the city of Chicago, there was a, that, um, African-Americans were 70% of those who have recently died from COVID-19 in the city of Chicago. But they did mention, and that's a staggering statistic and very unfortunate, but they did, this gets to the social determinants of health and how, um, underlying health issues, you know, are also at play. And we know the disproportionate amount of heart disease and diabetes and hypertension. Those were the main three that the, that the 70% also had, that those are also higher in certain areas. So that affects our communities in, uh, areas of color, people of color, um, very significantly and very proportionately. And then that also affects like, you know, Jeff was talking about the construction workers and, um, anything else. But we also have to think about all those who are frontline workers in our communities, like nurses, um, who work in all of these clinics where they're seeing patients. Um, and they come from these areas as well. So they are not only at a high risk for contracting the disease, but they also are the ones who are helping to treat the patients. So I just personally feel, um, when they talk about the superheroes who are, are new superheroes today, uh, during this pandemic is our frontline workers, our grocery store workers, our, all of the essential workers who must go to work to keep certain things moving. And for those who are non-essential workers, I know that that does put a lot of strain on people who don't have access to their job right now and have to apply for unemployment. But as we heard, that a lot of these resources are out there. Um, the other thing is, uh, that I wanted to let you know that someone posted in our chat box, um, Early Walker, thank you so much for your work in the community. Early is, um, someone who is just a giver in the community. And he has been providing groceries to seniors and not only providing those groceries, but delivering those groceries too, by using young people to help deliver those groceries and making sure that our seniors in certain underserved areas, very specifically, are getting, um, things that they need. And all of us, I really would encourage all of us to think about how we can help seniors. There's many people who live completely alone right now and, well, always. But right now, this is even harder for them because they just may be in fear to come outside. They don't know, maybe they don't use the internet, they don't know what to do. And if you find out you know any of those people, uh, please let us know. And Early has put his phone number and information into the chat box where if he's gonna be providing groceries for the next two weeks to seniors. So thank you so much. And I'm sure Early will also be able to help people in your community as well, Representative Ford, um, that he's not limited to any geographic area. So your email Representative Ford has been put back into the chat box. So thanks, uh, Christian, for doing that. And, um, there was, uh, Nikia Hall, is there any coverage for workers who have compromised immune systems or elderly who work in stores? You mean additional coverage from an insurance standpoint? I, I, I think, I'm not sure if that's what you mean or coverage.
They can, they can qualify for unemployment. Uh, that's the insurance I know that they will qualify for.
Great, okay. So Nikki, I hope that helps. Um, yeah, they can, they do have to continue to work, um, or they can opt not to work and get unemployment benefits as, yeah. So that's what Representative Ford just addressed. So I hope that helps. Uh, can they opt not to work?
If, if I could just say thank you for, uh, having me. And if I could just also thank all the essential workers for what they do. Um, because could you imagine us trying to go to the grocery store and no one's there to, um, help us? And I know that we've talked, um, Commissioner, about figuring out a way that we're gonna work together to do everything that we can so that essential workers are paid as essential people. And, and to, for them to work for, um, the. And to, for them to work for the minimum wage, and to not have a real living wage. And living wages should be equal to the cost of living. You know, it should be equal to, as the light and gas and food expenses go up, wages should go up with it. And so, we have to make sure that we treat our, now, we have a new name for minimum wage workers, essential workers. No longer are they minimum wage workers, they are our essential workers. And so, I wanna thank them, and also our first responders. And I wanna thank also all of the leaders, like Tony Brett Winkle, Mayor Lightfoot, and the Governor for really being strong leaders, and making sure that people understand that it's critical that we stay home, and that people understand. But I would encourage them to say everything possible to the black community to make sure that, we said in a way that they feel that they could be trusted when we're delivering the message. Because I still see a lot of people in the black communities not taking the stay-at-home order very seriously. And so, I think that we have to do everything that we can to create some kind of partnership with the non-for-profits in the area that's now had their doors closed. They have to be able to communicate with their clientele base that they used to deal with, and be a part of the echo of stay-at-home.
That is an excellent point, Representative Ford. And, you know, we hear strong messages of leadership from our leaders, like President Brett Winkle, as you mentioned, Governor Pritzker, Mayor of Chicago, Lori Lightfoot. But I just am astonished when I see other states that are not following suit, and aren't hearing the same kind of messages we're hearing. And we have churches still having mega-church sessions in certain areas. People still, there was just something that my friend showed me in DC, where the work was open, and it was packed. It was warm weather yesterday, and now they had to shut it down. So, this is a serious issue. And obviously, those of you who are on the call today understand and know that. But we just have to keep pounding that issue of stay-at-home, to stay safe, and protect all of our communities. We have to keep pounding that message out with everyone that we know. I mean, it has to be. So, I just wanna say, thank you all for joining us today. There's a ton of information. Representative Ford shared his email address. I also can share my email for the county, which is donna.miller@cookcountyil.gov. And I also encourage you to join our newsletter, which is www.godonago.com. And we will appreciate being in touch with you and communicating with you as time goes on. So, thank you for being with us today. Keep in touch, stay safe, and let us know what you need. And we are here for you as your community servants, and working towards the good of what's happening in all of our communities. So, thank you so much.
Thank you Commissioner, and I'll leave your studio. But I think you got a lot more questions.
No, I have more questions?
Yes.
Are these comments? I was trying to look, let me see. I'm sorry, I won't end if there's more questions, hold on. No, I think these are just comments. Okay, so, thank you everybody. And we'll do this again, and we look forward to you joining us again. Bye-bye.